Good evening. It is now 6:30 and I will bring the Monday, March 28, 2016 Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Commissioners, thank you for your time for this evening. I appreciate your efforts. Staff, I appreciate your time this evening also. Thank you for coming. The first item on our agenda this evening is actually the adoption of our posted agenda. And Commissioners, do we have anybody with any changes to the posted agenda? None from Commissioners? Staff, do we have any changes this evening?
No.
We do not. With that, I would stand for a motion.
For what?
Moved by Commissioner Thomas, second by Commissioner Benke, was number two. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is approval of the minutes from the March 14, 2016 meeting. Commissioners, do you have any changes to the minutes from the March 14 meeting? Nothing from Commissioners? Staff, any changes in the minutes?
No.
With that, I would also stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay, and abstained. You are not here.
Correct.
And the motion carries. That brings us to our third item this evening. The third item this evening is a public hearing. It is an application for Eleven Investments LLC for a planned unit development amendment to allow a community center with a prayer hall and school located at 13770 Frontier Court. Prior to bringing the city planner up, Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
I will be recusing myself from this as I have a business relationship with the applicant.
Thank you, Commissioner Workman. I appreciate that. And if you want to step down from the dais, we will continue the discussion. Ms. Garros, thanks for coming this evening, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, a couple of things just to note before we begin for the audience this evening. The planning commission meeting is web-streamed, so if there are people that are out watching this in the public or anyone that's in attendance this evening, the meeting is, you can locate the meeting at the city's website and watch it.
Can you speak up for use of microphone, please?
Think we may need. For the planning commission meeting tonight is web-streamed, so you can look at the city website and take a look at this meeting at any point in time. They remain on the website. And then also the complete agenda packet for the planning commission that they have reviewed is on the website. If this item, depending on what the recommendation of the planning commission is, when this item goes to the city council, there will also be a city council background packet of information, and that will be available usually Friday before the Tuesday night city council meeting, just for your information. Also for the planning commissioners, we did receive, after the packet was sent out last week, we did receive additional comments and emails from people who are interested in this site, and also from Mr. Rick Lovell, who's representing the applicant. We did email those to you, and we have provided those comments to you in written form, so you have those for your review. And they will also be included along with all of the public testimony this evening in the background that ultimately will go to the city council.
We did receive all the information. Thank you, Ms. Garros.
We do have a public hearing this evening. It's for Eleven Investments LLC. And what they are asking for is to amend the existing planned unit development approval that is on the property, to change it from small office use to a community center use, including a school and prayer hall. So that is what is before the planning commission this evening. In terms of the subject site and the staff report that was provided, we provided quite a bit of background on how this property came to be zoned, planned unit development, and the existing approval or approved use is for small office type use. And to do anything other than that would require this type of meeting and public hearing process to amend the PUD. On the screen is an aerial photo that gives you a representation of the neighborhood and the subject site. The property that we are dealing with tonight is 13770 Frontier Court. That is the middle building that is circled in yellow. There are three buildings on this property. The property is a little over four acres in size. The buildings have been constructed since 1998. Small office use has always been the approved use for this site. And the site is surrounded by an electrical substation to the north, by Dig Pond, which is a multifamily townhome residential development to the west. It does front on McAndrews Road East, which is a county road, and Frontier Court to the east, which is a city or local street. The city maintenance center is located northeast of the site at 13713 Frontier Court. And then we've got existing businesses located north of McAndrews Road. In terms of the site itself, the zoning is B3 general business with a planned unit development overlay. What that means is that the subject site uses are restricted to what is identified in the planned unit development document. That's what's being requested for modification this evening. In addition to that, the subject site is within 1,000 feet of Almagnat Lake, so it is within a shoreland management district. And there is a wetland that is on the western part of the property, so it is in the wetland district as well. With that, there is a detailed background and history that's provided in the report. I can address questions to that, but we'll not go through that specifically. In terms of the request, or a little bit of the background just for the audience and the commissioners, the site does have a lot of history to it. The area shown in green is the original planned unit development, which is approved in 1993. At that point in time, the city needed space for a maintenance center. Cooperative Power Association at that time owned all the property. This also involved additional property acquisitions off this particular site. But primarily in that earliest PUD, what happened is that the subject site we're dealing with tonight was identified as a commercial outlot, meaning that any of the uses within the commercial zone at that time were allowed. Then beyond that, we had the 1997 PUD, and to the lower left-hand side of the screen, that is the subject site. That 1997 PUD dealt with only the subject site, and that's where it was established that the three buildings could be constructed. The PUD allowed for more than one building on the lot, which needs PUD or conditional use permit approval. That PUD also allowed for additional hard surface or impervious surface on the property beyond what the standard was. And the rationale for that was related to the site could have been developed with any use, again, in that underlying B3 district. What was proposed was much less than what could have been there. And in exchange for that, the parking lot was identified. There are a total of 96 stalls that were approved in 1997. There are 95 stalls that are out there on-site, but that's due to restriping. But there were 96 that were originally approved. The reason that the 1997 PUD was very popular with the residents and then also the city council at the time was because instead of having just general commercial out there, what this really resulted in is creating a land use where we knew that the uses would be small office. We knew what the traffic and transportation impacts would be, impervious surface, et cetera. And that is why the PUD is standing as it exists today. For the properties to the east of the subject site, those properties were part of a different planned unit development approval. That would be the Celadon site, the Copy Center, the Car Wash, and the Valley Natural Foods. So they were initially part of one project, one planned unit development. They do have separate approval than what we're looking at tonight for this site. The subject site, again, consists of the three buildings that are shown. There is one parking access or driveway to the site from Frontier Court at this location. And then there are the three buildings, and each has kind of a separate distinct area for parking adjacent to the building. There is also a stormwater pond that was developed on the site, and part of the earlier PUD, again, for this, was that this site is very constrained, meaning that development of the property is very difficult. And that would be because there are very large existing utility easements on the site. All of this area is encumbered by an easement. The area to the south is encumbered by an easement. And pretty much everything to the north of this northernmost building is also within a drainage and utility easement. So the entire development plan for the site was seen as very favorable due to the site constraints. It could be developed with a use where the property owner was able to provide for uses and have a return on their investment. And then it also provided for the needed utilities and stormwater drainage and improvements to the property. In terms of the application, the existing site plan is shown on the left. This is the existing floor plan for the central building. And on the right is what is proposed. We're looking at a proposal that includes classrooms, which are generally outlined in the orange, and then office. And the area that is in yellow is the prayer area or the assembly part of the use that we are considering this evening. The applicant provided a parking sketch to show how site parking would be accomplished for all of the existing buildings. And here they're showing the areas in blue to be associated with the northernmost building. The area in green is related to the Medina Community Center and the parking that they anticipate. And then the third office building closest to McAndrews and Frontier Court would have the parking that's in the kind of peach or tan type color there. Part of the request for the application related to the parking is that the Medina Community Center will not be used seven days a week on a 24-hour type basis. What's proposed is that they have school activities that they provide on Saturdays and Sundays for teaching students. And then on Fridays from 1:00 to 9:00 PM is when prayer services are open for people to come and pray at the site. The subject site is not a mosque. It is not. They are not proposing to have funerals, weddings, those types of things. What is proposed is exactly what is in the application and what is shown on the site documents. In addition to the onsite parking, the applicant is showing that there is, there are parking spaces available along Frontier Court on the west side. And then also something that is not in your packet but that we received today is that the adjacent property to the east, Celadon Systems, has agreed in terms of, we did receive an email, that they agree to allow Medina Community Center to use up to 14 of their parking spaces on weekend days. So we do have some confirmation on that that was not available at the time the report was written. In terms of the deviations for this planned unit development, there are three deviations that are noted. One is that a deviation is needed to reduce building perimeter landscaping around the subject site, and that would be to accommodate a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk that's required, as I understand, from building and fire code for some of the accesses. The deviation is that if you put the sidewalk where it was initially proposed, it takes out some of the existing landscaping. The applicant, I talked with them today, and they are able to modify the plan so that they can locate the sidewalk a little bit further out and then still maintain that building perimeter landscaping. That is what they advised us today. The second deviation is to allow lesser parking than what the ordinance standards are. And that would be a deviation to allow between 138 to 143 parking stalls, as opposed to what the ordinance standard would require. That's 203 to 205 spaces. The last deviation is not particularly associated with this tenant, but applies to the entire property. We included it because any time there is something on-site at the time of a PUD application that does not meet the ordinance, we note that in the staff report. And that would be that currently there are dumpsters that are located on the property, which are not in an enclosed building. So they do need to, they do need to either store waste within the existing buildings, or they need to construct an enclosed trash recycling building that is similar to the other buildings on-site. Want to go back quickly to the site plan. In terms of the staff review of the site, the ordinance is clear in what the parking standards are. And the ordinance sets forth that there are two items that you look at. One would be related to the square footage of the proposed use, or in the event that it is different, you look at the occupancy. In this case, the occupancy for the proposed building is more than the square footage calculation, so the occupancy is what determines the amount of parking spaces that are required. In terms of who identifies what that occupancy is, that is something that is done through the fire code and our fire marshal. And the applicant has indicated a need for 366 people, that there would be that many people at the maximum occupancy, and that would relate to 92 parking stalls just for this middle building use. The entire site, as I indicated before, has 95 parking spaces, so almost all of the parking would be associated with this use. In terms of when the fire code is applied, that changes to 629 occupants based on the floor plan submitted, or 157 parking stalls. We advise the applicant that there is a process through the state fire code for a variance. If there is an issue in the determination between, you know, an applicant and a fire marshal, they have not pursued that, decided not to pursue that. What stands is the fire marshal code interpretation, and that's per the city's ordinance. So that is what we're looking at. The entire complex for all three buildings, based on office use for the other two buildings, and the proposed community center use, as identified in the proposed layout plan, would be between 205 to 211 parking stalls. Part of the rationale from the applicant is that because the site will only be occupied on Friday afternoons, late afternoons and evenings, Saturday, Sunday, that it is off-use type parking in terms of the need. Generally, the other businesses and the city maintenance facility operate during the week, kind of an eight to five, eight to six type of thing. With the city maintenance center, it can be later than that because we do have a fueling station for all city vehicles that can go in and fuel. And then also, if there are needs for snow plowing, et cetera, that happen throughout the day and evening, then those facilities are used for that as well. Staff did take a look at that, and we do concur that there is, that there is some overlap in terms of use, but the ordinance is what we need to apply. And the ordinance does not include that standard, if you will, to be able to look at the off-peak time usage. It merely is based on either square footage or the number of occupants. So that's what we need to deal with. In terms of the use itself, from a staff standpoint, the use is at issue is the assembly part of the use. That would be where the prayer hall is. And the issue with that is that even though the applicant identifies what it will be used for at this point in time, at some point in the future, we've got changes in people who attend, people who operate the facility, staff people, city staff people, et cetera. And as long as that occupancy is set at that number, they can have that many people there. Will it ever be occupied at that full occupancy level? Maybe not, but maybe so. And that is where the fundamental issue is, is that once this is approved at that occupancy, the city then has really little ability to do enforcement on those in a time consistent manner, if you will. If something were to happen and they had a larger gathering for some reason, perhaps it was some type of a school presentation or something of that sort, what would happen is if, if there was over-parking in that area and if the city were notified, if it happens during the day, our staff can go out and we can advise them that you're overparked. We have issues. If the parking is on the street, we can call the police department. They can issue a ticket. But in terms of the zoning violation itself for the use, we have to follow the law. And on that, we have certain requirements, where we need to notify the applicant in writing. We need to give them a specified amount of time where they can comply with the ordinance. We need to follow specific procedures for mailing notice, et cetera. And it's potential that a situation could end up being prosecuted in court. So when we do code enforcement for zoning-related issues, it can take a matter of weeks, months, or we have some cases that have taken years to resolve. None of those are something that would be appropriate for being able to deal with a youth situation on-site. So that is where the main principal staff resistance, if you will, or issue with this particular site is with the occupancy itself and how we deal with what could be the maximum occupancy at the site. We do have our fire marshal here, representatives from our police department, and Brian Hillgardner from our engineering consultant that can address specific questions related to occupancy and transportation and such. There was a, an overview of the parking situation, the transit traffic situation with this proposal. And what it found was that although McAndrews Road, or considering McAndrews Road is a county facility, it's set up to accommodate a lot of traffic. This particular application would not likely cause major issues along McAndrews Road. However, if it were to be occupied towards that fuller occupancy end, because the site design is set up the way it is, where there's only one driveway access, where there is one way, you don't have a good circulation plan where people can come in, drop off other folks, park while you have other people pulling out of parking spaces and trying to get out of the same entrance. So because of that, there's a possibility that we'd have backup along Frontier Court and issues at the site itself with parking just because of the way that the circulation system or lack thereof is on-site. With that, the recommendation from staff at this point is to deny the PUD amendment application based on the information that has been provided herein. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. First of all, I would like to welcome everyone this evening, and I'd like to kind of walk through real quickly what our process typically is. Staff has given their presentation. I am going to turn it over to the commissioners at this point. The commissioners will have questions of staff or possibly questions of some other experts in the room. We may, at that point, invite the applicant up to speak. Once the commissioners have their questions answered, then I will open the public hearing, and at that point, I'll talk a little bit about the public hearing. So with that said, Commissioners, it's your pleasure. What questions do you have for Ms. Garros? Commissioner Levy, you have the floor.
Yes. As I understand it, you're talking about some 200, at the maximum occupancy, some 200 parking spaces. With the Celadon approval and parking on Frontier Court and the 95 within the site itself, how many spaces is that total out to be? Do you have that number?
Commissioner Levy, I would like to clarify first. We, the information in our background from Celadon is for 14 stalls on the weekend only, and our approvals are never based off of parking on a public street.
What is that?
The parking stalls that you mentioned that are available on Frontier Court
Are not counted.
Are not counted in the calculation.
Okay. All right. So we're 105
Yes.
Out of the 200 and something.
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioners, other questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, first of all, I think the background information provided to us is, this school has started, the building, without any approval from the city or recommendation from the planning commission. Am I right?
I'm sorry, I don't follow.
The school has started.
I see, yes. The school has started. That has been cited with a code compliance file. The applicant moved in. They, the owner did approve the lease with the applicant for this use. They moved in. The way that the city found out about this is Mr. Lovell, who is currently representing the applicant, called the city when he was requested to take on this project, for the remodeling project as an architect. He has worked in the city and knows that there are uses that require zoning approvals in addition to standard building permits, et cetera. So he contacted our community development director, and it was there that we found out that the school was already operating within the facility. They do not have the approval to do that, so that's where the code compliance or enforcement started. So you are correct, they are operating the school. The way, the procedure that we follow, when there is a code action or an illegal occupancy, is to allow the applicant a period of time to bring the site into conformance. And if they don't by that certain date, then it's, it's sent to the city attorney for possible prosecution. So in this case, the code enforcement started. It's ongoing. They are proceeding through this process. If the city council approves this PUD amendment, that code enforcement action will be closed, because then they will meet the ordinance. If they do not, then one of the recommendations from staff in the denial is that the site be brought into compliance within 60 days of council approval. If not, then we have a situation with the city attorney will become involved.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Ms. Garros, for that explanation. I would like, first of all, to record my dissatisfaction with the property owner. Being a property owner in that community, the property owner should have known, at least I assume that the property owner knew, that he had to get approval from city council, not even not the planning commission, but city council before they can start a school in a building. And I think most of us know that to have a school in any building in any part of Minnesota, there are certain requirements that have to be in place. And I assume that that was not done. So I would like to record my dissatisfaction. So I would like to record my dissatisfaction with the property owner. So I just want to start from there. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Benke.
Deb, some questions from the background. The original PUD that drove this to the office use was 1977? I'm sorry, 1997?
Yes, for this particular site, for the office use, yes, that's correct.
Right. And the reason it was written into the PUD, which, PUD is a city ordinance?
Yes, correct.
Which is a city law?
Yes, it's a zoning, a PUD is actually a zoning district. It's a negotiated zoning district, if you will, between the property owner and the city. And when it's approved, it is.
So for our audience, we are speaking in speak. PUD stands for Planned Unit Development.
Yes.
But the PUD is reduced to an ordinance that is law, it's the city's law.
That is correct. It becomes a zoning district, and then the maps and documentation associated with the approval all become part of that zoning district, that PUD zone.
Right. And then the reason it was, the reason the PUD was created was to allow greater hardcover in that area so that these three buildings and all the existing parking could be built?
No. The reason that this application came along, before this application, there was another application on the property to the east. And that was for, I believe in 1996, for a Holiday Station store and a McDonald's, which was very much opposed by residents. And there were issues that were brought up, the same issues that we're discussing this evening, in terms of limited parking, limited access, et cetera. So from that experience, that PUD was withdrawn, that application was withdrawn. The owner at the time was the power company. They worked with Johnson-Ryland to come up with a plan or a proposal that met the objectives of the community task force that was created on the previous application, and came in with this application for these three offices with small office as the use. And the city took a look at that and said, that is a win-win for everybody. And part of the deviations that were granted, one was a deviation for the shoreline impervious surface, and that's because there was dedication of the large drainage and utility easements on the property. They also created a stormwater pond on the southwest part of the subject site. So through those drainage and utility easements, more area is diverted to the stormwater pond and to that, to dig pond than just the subject site. It created a more, a larger regional sub-area, if you will.
Okay.
So that's where the impervious surface standard relates.
Okay, so I guess my understanding from the way you were talking about it was essentially that the PUD for the less dense use was partially a trade-off for the larger hardcover?
Well, it is, in the way, just in the design of the buildings and the parking structure, yes.
Right. And planned unit developments are developed so that there's a trade-off. You get more so that we get something back. And in this case, that has happened almost 20 years ago.
Yes, correct.
The next subject here, do we have the ability to set time limits for the use of a building via a planned unit development amendment?
Yes. The issue is enforcement.
I guess the last thing I think I have right now is, with the previous approvals and the previous hardcover work that was done, is there room there for any more asphalt or other hardcover?
They would need to come in and go through our review, they would actually need to apply for a conditional use permit from the shoreline requirements and have DNR review of the application to increase it above what is currently there.
So they're already up against?
Yes.
So there is no extra space currently in those?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, okay. That's all I have right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Thomas, you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, I apologize. Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Garros, can you repeat for us the timeline for the school, the time of the day, and what
The schools are, the school hours are proposed to be on Saturday and Sunday only.
Ms. Garros, if we don't have that, we can certainly ask the applicant of that when they come up.
It is in the staff report, I just.
Yeah, I remember, I just.
I don't recall. Oh, here we go. Saturdays and Sundays, the school will offer classes from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and there will be no prayer services.
Okay. Thank you. I think I have further questions about this, but I believe it might be better to wait until the applicant is up and asks his questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. If there are no further questions, I would like to invite the applicant up to the podium, and please give us your name and your address for the record, please. Just right here in the middle. Thank you.
Go around, go around, the other side, go around the other side.
I don't know which way.
Okay. Everybody can hear the applicant? Okay. Thank you. Can you please state your name and your address for the record, please?
My name is Ali Abdal. Address 852 West Street, apartment 302, St. Paul, Minnesota, 5547.
Sir, thank you for coming this evening. I will, at this point, turn it over to the commissioners for questions. Commissioner Singh, you are first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sir, I'd be welcome, glad you're here. My question to you regards the school. According to staff, the school be held Saturdays and Sundays only, and all day, Saturday and Sunday. What happens during the summer when the regular schools are closed and you're expecting to, like Monday through Friday also, include, have school there? And this is the same question for spring break and winter break and other school days when schools are not in session?
Thank you for your question. The Sunday and Sundays, it's two groups that come. So 8:30, they come, 8 o'clock there, and then they leave by 1:00. Another team, another group of students come by 2:00, and teachers take break between that time, and then they leave by 6:00. So it's that rotation, that it's basically, we would not call it as a school, it's more like a community education. We're not teaching like math and English because these students, they go to school. So it's more of, you know, teaching them good values, respect, connecting the gap or the bridge, as a bridge between their parents, the parents who are more traditional, you know, raised outside of the United States, and then the kids who are mostly educated, born here, and bridging that gap and making that understanding easier and teaching them the values. So that's primarily what we do. When it comes to the winter, we have spring break right now, and we don't have any, actually. We allow them, since they go to school five days and they are with us four hours, Saturday and Sunday, eight hours, we allow them to rest and continue with what they're doing. So that's how, summertime, you know, we were, if I a little bit go back to our history, we were on traveler's trail, Medina Community Center, a 501 traveler's trail in Brunswick. And we just, summertime, we would have like maybe one class as an enrichment. So they would come, you know, one class, two students will come and we'll teach them, but it would not be like regular, it's the students that need help, more help, that we would keep them there, one class or two classes.
Thank you. You know, you mentioned community education. I like community education. Those people who know me know why I like community education. So there's a possibility that in addition to the Saturday and Sunday, there may be classes during the summer, you know, not as many students, but one or two classes during the week.
Maybe. It's not something that we right now discuss about. If it's not, if the zoning does not allow, then we're not planning to have them.
See, it's very important for us to know that because we take that into consideration when we make a recommendation to the city council. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Benke.
Sir, my question comes about because I see conflicting information in the report that was given to us by our staff and then from comments from the application, and also from information that was provided by the residents from the meeting that was held, the community meeting. The application says that your current membership is almost 150 people, of which slightly more than half are children and slightly less are adults. It says that the size of each family varies, but is approximately two and a half per children. As the community grows, the ratio is not expected to change. Well, I can see that, but the question I have is, as the community grows, this implies that you do intend on growing your community. But then I see other comments where it states that it doesn't, the community is as large as it can get right now. So I'm just trying to understand which of those is right.
You know, when we moved on to the space, then first, I wish I could talk about the zoning issue. There was an attorney that we had, and we were very careful into moving this space. And, you know, from what we knew at that time was that it was a B3 zoning and it allowed us to operate the education, community education that we do. Now, when we came at the beginning, we had some space. You know, when we were living on traveler's trail, we were telling people to be on the waiting list. And when we moved, we called the parents and we said, we have some space for you. When we reached like mid-January, we were reaching the limit, and then we stopped accepting applicants, and we say, that is the capacity that we will maintain. Mostly it's children, adults are like maybe one class, women would stay because they want to stay around their kids. So that's, but primarily the students are children. So if they reach high school, if they graduate from high school, they go to college, most likely they will not stay, so they will move out. So as some people move out, we will allow some to move in. But as of now, we have reached the capacity and we have decided to stop, so that's.
Okay. That's what I have, I think.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? I do have one for you, sir. We had a fair amount of background information. We had some information that I know at some point there was some disagreement with you and the city from the fire marshal's calculation of the occupants. And I'll read from the background. The fire marshal calculates the occupancy load for the proposed community center to be 629 occupants based on the 2007 Minnesota Fire Code. That drives to a parking stall process. And the ordinance for the standard of all the occupied space and vacant space within this area is 205, I'm sorry, the ordinance parking standard for all of the occupied and vacant office space plus the community center is 205 to 211, with 96 stalls currently. And then there was some information in our background that said that the applicant had submitted your own occupancy limit of 366. And it said, using the applicant's occupancy count, the ordinance standard, parking standard for all the occupied and vacant space plus the community center would be 140 to 146 parking stalls. So given your own thought process, the occupancy numbers that you've given us still is well over the available 96 stalls that are there. Is that correct? Is that, am I stating that correctly? Okay. I just wanted to, I wanted to clarify that because we did have a fair amount of information in our background, so.
Yeah. I have one point to add to that. If you come Saturday and Sunday, probably like 20, 25 cars will be there. The parents that will come, they will drop their kids, and then they will go. So that is, we're not even expecting to reach that. Only there was that issue of Friday, between around 1:00 to 2:00, that there will be the parents coming and they leave their children to pray for that Friday prayer. But other than that, from what we have calculated and, I mean, decided or what's been usual is that, you know, you're not going to have all the parents staying there. They will come and drop their kids, and then they will go. So that's how we are operating or planning to continue using this space, Saturdays and Sundays.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Benke.
One other element in the background was a comment that no weddings or funerals are held at the site or the community center, and that you're, again, that you're only going to operate those facilities at the time stated. Where else do you then have as a backup for the other functions?
The, in the Twin Cities area, if there's value needed, there are two places that they go to, one in Columbia Heights and the other in Brunswick. So that's where the Somali community here, or in Brunswick, or in Minneapolis, that's where they use. When it comes to weddings, people rent wedding halls. So they will go to Minneapolis, where the many community members, friends, relatives are there. So that's how they have been doing.
But to clarify, none of those uses are in front of us, the city?
Well, they're basically saying that those are not, are not going to be here, part of understanding where else they might have, yeah.
Commissioner Benke, your second question?
I didn't have one.
You didn't have another question? Okay. Commissioners, other questions of the applicant? At this time? Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We may have you back up. Okay.
Thank you.
A couple of points of clarification, if you did get the public background, there was some information about a daycare center, and that is not an applicant that is in front of us, that is not an application that's in front of us this evening. Specifically, the application in front of us is for 13770 Frontier Court only. It is for a community center on a prayer hall. It is, they are asking for an amendment to a planned unit development, which was developed in 1997. And that particular amendment has a fair amount of accumulances on the property, so we may have some questions to get to that. So I'd like to clarify that. I do ask that we're going to open the public hearing. I would like to have anyone that wishes to speak to the issue to, in an orderly fashion, come to the podium and give us your name and your address for the record. And I would appreciate from the, in the instance of time, that if someone has already spoken to a topic, I would appreciate it if you speak that it's a somewhat new topic or new information for us this evening so we can, in an orderly fashion, review this process. So at this point, this application does require a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing, and I would invite anyone from the audience that would like to speak to step up to the podium and give us your name and your address. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Andrea Morsete Grisini. I'm at 13817 Frontier Lane.
Hi, I'm Andrea Morset Grizini. I'm at 13817 Frontier Lane. I'm going to speak for myself as a residence just adjacent to where this proposed community center will be developed or would continue to operate. I'm also going to speak for my father, who is at 14133 Frontier Lane, Gene Grizini Jr. He's in Tucson, but he sent me his comments via technology. I'll start with his, if I, if you don't mind. Gene Grizini is, has been very involved in planning, so he's very aware of the needs of the planning commission and of our community for years. He was also involved in the 1993 and the 1997 issues that came before the commission and the city. Here are his comments. "There is absolutely no valid reason to change zoning at this time. There are plenty of places that are zoned for schools or uses such as they want. The only reason this spot is desired is because they have a desperate owner." I would echo this issue and I would echo Dr. Singh's comments as well. This is not, this is a developer issue, and it's disappointing that this developer did not educate their renters on the issues that were in front of them, which are significant. And that's unfair to both the city and us residences, as well as, as the school, who's already started in good faith, not understanding apparently some of these issues. I would add to this, and I'm sure there are neighbors that will speak more passionately or more specifically to the issue of the Lake Shore. I'm a Lake Shore owner, as is Mr. Grizini, my father, and we have invested significant time and effort and money into protecting Lake El Magna to some success. As residents, it's our own money and our own time. A number of us have tried to do, I tried to do a deck, and I know neighbors have also tried to do development on their homes, and it has been blocked cold on any variances whatsoever that would in any way, shape, or form affect, change any particularly hard surfaces issues. So we could not build a deck because of that, because we're too close to the lake. And we certainly accept, respect, and understand that, but we're going to be really uncomfortable if there are developers that are desperate to sell distressed property, which is what this developer does. They're, I looked them up. They, they bought this in a distressed mode, and they're trying to turn it quick. So we're going to be really upset if this is, this is accepted by, or recommended by the commission or the council at all, although the staff agrees. And that's where I'm at. I'll leave it to other neighbors. I'm sure they have more comments.
Ma'am, thank you, thank you very much for your comment. Please give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Anna Watts. I live at 1122 Aston Place in Burnsville. I have a...
And I think we have some information from you in our background?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a vested interest not only in the community, but also as somebody that potentially was going to rent out in what's the first building. I did not sign a lease yet, but I was told by the broker that, and I was going to run a business on the weekends, that nobody would be in that parking area. And I have asked Howard Jones, which is in the building. They ended up coming on a Saturday, and there was people in the first parking unit. So it concerns me, I didn't, I'm not going into the building, but it concerns me that as renters in the building, they're told something totally different than what is told to the people that, in the community, the city. The city that I found out tonight was not even told that there's anything in there, a daycare that's already up and operating. As residents of the community, we are owed to know that. It's wrong. We abide by the law. They need to abide by the law. Secondly, I would feel that the applicant would be concerned about their limitations and their safety of cars going in and out of that unit and facility, of children in and out of the cars. And one thing that was just mentioned this evening is on Fridays, they do a transition. There's businesses running there, not just with the people that run that spot, that lease, but their clients and their customers. That was not mentioned at all. So I'm concerned about that. Friday is too much. They deserve a spot that's going to adequately equip their, their members, as we are as residents of the community, for the safety of people and pedestrians that walk along County Road 11 and the cars in and out. There's only one way to get in there unless you go through the light off of McAndrews or 11. There's only one way and you're crossing. Yes, McAndrews and 11 is equipped to take many drivers, but is it equipped for the safety of people walking in the community? And people that are renting in an establishment right now should not be lied to. I was told that there was nobody in the middle building, that I, my, my operation was going to run on weekends, and I was told, no problem, nobody would be in the slot. I drove past there, not this past weekend, the weekend before, there was people in the first lot. And the person that's leasing Howard Jones said there was people in his lot. And that's, that's when it's not fully in operation. So, I mean, we can make a lot of false promises, but who's going to, who is going to police that? Who's going to be there watching traffic? Who's going to take liability for the safety of the children? I'm done.
Thank you. I appreciate your, your comments. Please give us your name and address for the record, sir.
Jim Giebel. I'm at 1701 Victoria Lane, which is directly across from the property. Good evening, Chairman, and good evening, Commissioners. I was here not too long ago.
For Celadon?
For Celadon.
Yes.
In opposition of, of course. I think in history, Deb and city staff did a, a pretty good job, thorough job of the background. And I don't even know if you were here in that time, Deb, or not, because it was a cantankerous time.
And I remembered your comment, so I knew that that information was correct about the McDonald's and the Holiday Station store.
Very much so. And, and maybe for, not to bore you guys, but for members in the audience behind me that wasn't aware, just a few kind of inside matters with that. One, the neighborhood raised around $35,000 by the residents to fight that McStop. We hired attorneys that were specialists in PUD and real estate and such, and we fought City Hall, and we won. The McStop was the exact type of development that was not won by the neighborhood. High density, high volume, 24/7. So what's down on County Road 70 off 35W in Lakeville, that's what was proposed for the property today. So just for that background. At that time, we formed a steering committee with many residents of the city of Burnsville, not just the neighborhood, and with city officials. We met for months, months during work time, during evenings, to make sure that we could get to a situation that was beneficially, not only for the residents, but for the city and the developers. And we think we did that when we developed and approved this PUD, or the city of Burnsville approved this PUD. You mentioned, yes, it is 20 years old, so maybe that's a good sign that it is held its own for that time period. The hope is that that continues. A couple of notes that was mentioned in the report, the small office use was viewed as a PUD benefit because it established a land use more closely representative of a limited neighborhood business zone. And I think it's done that. And, you know, we've worked through issues when we had them. Monday through Friday operations, that was one of the things that we talked long and hard on to develop this PUD, that we wanted businesses Monday through Friday so we could have our weekends. All right? We know development is going to go in there, commercial land is going to go in there, but we really pushed hard from Monday through Friday. Obviously, the proposed, the proposal that the applicant has before us is just the opposite of that. It brings heavy duty traffic during the weekends, which is what, one of the one things that we have wanted to avoid with the PUD. In addition to that time, several lake associations were involved. Lake Al Magna Lake Association, Early Lake Association, Crystal Lake, Lake Association, to develop the shoreline, overland district for all of those areas. So this went beyond just Lake, Lake Al Magna. This was a, a citywide effort through the city and lake associations and the Minnesota DNR to develop this land for protection of recreational waters. This district falls in that. We've always viewed this PUD as a very long-term commitment between the residents and the city, and that's why I think we explicitly spelled out how we wanted this PUD to look. We negotiated in good faith during that time, and we trusted that the city government would enforce the PUD accordingly. And thus far, that's been true. I know at that time you guys were not members of the steering committee, planning commissions, city council, what have you. So you don't have that history like we do. But I do believe it is the obligation of the current planning commission and the city council to honor the intent of that original PUD that was developed. I think Andrea hit pretty well, and the landlord applicant issue is terrible. I don't know what can be done. It's water under the bridge for the most part. I guess my personal feeling is that they probably were misled, but I don't know that for a fact. But it puts them in a, in a difficult situation, and I feel for them for that. I do believe the city of Burnsville has locations within the ci, in the city for zoning, for religious organizations, community centers. And I believe that would be a much more proper place for the applicant at this time. The occupancy load, 629 is the last report from the fire marshal. I don't know, it sounds like there may be some changes to that. But, you know, we, we've talked about, is that space going to be used? Is there going to be growth? And it sounds like there already was. I mean, Travelers Trail, they, they grew. They moved over to here illegally as they are, but they're there. And I think growth will continue. I don't know if any of the nearby businesses are here, the Celadon, the Cornerstone, Valley Food Co-op. I think everybody's objective is to grow your business, grow customers, grow sales, whatever it may be. The YMCA up the street, membership, Valley Food Co-op, is membership growth. That's how they have to survive. And I believe, in my opinion, that this organization will do the same. And they're already busting at the seams, you know, based on the numbers presented here tonight on occupancies of 386. Those are big numbers. So I, I think you have to take some of that with a little bit of grain of salt. On page nine, in your handouts or in your report, there is a statement that I believe is probably as important as any that we could speak of tonight. Second paragraph down the middle, "The city has to plan for maximum use of the site as it is impractical to have occupancy restrictions as a condition of approval." So if you base decisions on full occupancy of 629, and you come up with the 150 parking spaces, you guys can do the math from that, but I think things will grow from that. And once approved, there's language in there several places by city staff that talks about, and Deb mentioned it tonight, that you're kind of out of luck. You could be in court for weeks, months, years, whatever it may be. So once approval takes place, that's not a good situation. Traffic, the numbers seem to be all over the board. Mr. Laval in the architectural report talks about 35 cars. Mr. Peterson from Bolton and Mank talks about 387 cars at peak occupancy events, though he does state that may not happen all that often. I guess the one number I don't have is number of students that will attend the morning sessions, number of students that will attend the afternoon session on Saturday, on Sunday. I did go to the informational meeting, and what I had in my notes probably isn't correct, so, and that was 100, 100 students in the morning, a little bit less in the afternoon. And I don't know if that's accurate. But if it is accurate, it doesn't maybe appear to be a lot, but if you have 100 students coming in Saturday morning at 8:00 and say, I don't know, I'll be conservative, three kids per car, that's 33 cars in, inbound, 33 cars outbound, 66. 12:00 it ends, 33 cars come pick up those kids, 33 cars leave, another 66. So 132 trips for the morning session. Afternoon session, similar. Sunday, 8:00 AM, similar number, 66, 66. So you're talking large numbers. 132, 132 is 264, times 2 is 528, 528 trips. And I don't think that's anywhere in any report. That's traffic. That's noise. That's pollution. That's oil drippage, antifreeze, gasoline. Cars, heavy duty traffic. I don't think anybody can deny that. It seems kind of lame, you know, Sunday school, morning, afternoon, but when you add up the numbers, it is very, very extreme. And I think that needs to be evaluated. In conclusion, it's 6,000 square feet of space, but it's not permitted. It's a non-conforming use. It's at the opposite end of the spectrum of what the original intended PUD said in 1997 and is still in place today. It is a substantial and drastic deviation from the original intent as well. It is in direct conflict with existing PUD. It's very high use. It's high density. It's high intensity. Things that are not for that neighborhood. The demand exceeds the parking spaces. We've heard that over and over this evening. It will have detrimental impact to adjacent roads. That was talked a little bit about. Overflow parking could likely leak over to our area, the most likely space. As I mentioned, there is zoning in the city of Burnsville that permits religious gatherings and community centers. That is where we believe this type of development should be located and be best served. I would hope that the city of Burnsville offers assistance to the Medina community if this proposal is rejected, to guide them and help them find the correct location. It seems like they've been pushed around twice now by maybe, I don't know who, but it's not right. And I, I kind of liken the situation where I built my home 30 years ago on Lake Al Magna. We were digging our foundation, and the city of Burnsville came and said, what are you doing? I said, putting up our house. And they said, you can't build it that close. Shoreland ordinance, 100 feet from the, or 100-year flood. So you had to be pushed back 30 feet from the 100-year flood. So we had to change everything. Do we like it? No. Did it cost us some money? Yes. But there are rules, regulations, and codes in place to take care of those types of things. So lastly, I'd just say we strongly oppose this request, and we agree with the city recommendation wholeheartedly to deny the PUD application amendment due not only to the obvious parking and related safety issues caused by that, but the tremendous size and scope of this project, which I again categorize as very, very extreme. The bottom line is this is not a permitted use for this B3 designation. It was never intended for this high-volume, high-density development. It is not supported by the current infrastructure, which was created at the time for the sole purpose of minimal neighborhood traffic disruption and reducing... purpose of minimal neighborhood traffic disruption and reducing water and pollution runoff into Lake Almagnet. We request that the Planning Commission follow the recommendation of denying the PUD amendment as requested by the city staff in their report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the Planning Commission? And please, as I ask again, let's try not to duplicate topics. We've kind of talked about hard surface, we've talked about parking, we've talked about traffic, we've been educated on the history of the PUD, so if we could focus on some, please give us your name and address for the record.
Dr. Chad Rennwick. I'm at 13886 Frontier Court. I'm in the first building. Been there for 16 years.
You're the chiropractor?
The chiropractor.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, the parking situation in there concerns me and just them saying that, you know, it's going to be less people in the, in the building during those times. My business is the busiest on Fridays. From that 1 to 7, we are there. They speak about the 8 to 5, but we are there much longer than that time, and that would restrict my business, definitely. So that's, the main concern is that definitely the parking, and that you'd be hard-pressed to get 96 spaces out of there to in and out of that places is not really easy, so that is taking, even if they only had those 130 or took the 92 spaces, that would leave us with, with no spaces. That would definitely ruin my business. Thank you.
Sir, thank you very much. I appreciate it as a lieutenant to come in and speak to us. I appreciate your time this evening.
Sorry.
There was almost an accident.
Well, I was going to speak about an accident.
Can I please have you give us your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Cuthy, and I live at 13805 Frontier Lane, just next to Jim. And, you know, just mentioned accidents with that kind of high-traffic area, and nobody really addressed that specifically, but I think we're going to, you'd have to expect an increase in traffic accidents, whether pedestrian or car, at that intersection. When we come to the corner to get in and out at almost any time, it's very difficult to get out onto Frontier Lane, whether you're going west or east. And there's been some close calls for, I'm sure, all of us owners, and if you add another 500, 600 trips on the weekend, there's going to be some real incidents there. But the one thing I wanted to really focus on is something maybe nobody's thought about, and that's long-term. If you modify the PUD and approve it, say a year or two from now, they decide they need more space and they move out, does the owner of the building have the right then with the change to lease it to McDonald's, lease it to Holiday, or any of those other things?
Sir, we can certainly address that. If we make a modification to the PUD, whatever modification does ride with the property, but for your example, the original PUD would be in place with this modification, so in your example of the McDonald's, that would be a deviation to the original PUD and to this one modification, so that would not be allowed, they'd have to come back to us. We can't deny an application, someone could certainly come in and apply again, but they would be following the rules that are from the original PUD and this one modification.
Okay. If it wasn't them, but it could still be a high-volume other type of business or service that you may consider?
Yeah, once again, it would depend on the application and what that was, and given the change.
So we would open up another can of worms at a possible future date if you change the PUD?
That's a possibility. The opportunity for one PUD wouldn't necessarily drive another, it would be based on an application. But the PUD does ride with the property, to answer your first question.
Okay. So, and I'd just like to reiterate my agreement with the other comments up here as well. We're in agreement with you that you should decline this as well, and I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ma'am? There's a path to the podium. Thank you for coming. Please give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Kay Ochsner. I live at 1404 McAndrews Road East in the Deep Pond townhome. And I was just gonna, I know you've heard this a bit, but the traffic situation on McAndrews, it seems like it's, you know, because it's four-lane with a center median that it can handle a lot of traffic, but going in and out of Deep Pond entrance, you can sit there for 20 minutes sometimes. And we sometimes get people turning in there to U-turn to go back out because they're having trouble getting across. My other concern is the noise factor in the summertime. You know, we're going to be outside on the deck, the pond, you know, when you have water, noise carries across the pond a lot easier than it does across land, and that building is situated such that that noise will carry directly across the pond. So those are two things I was going to mention. With the fact of it being a weekend, if it was during the week, I really wouldn't object so much, but on a weekend, you know, that's my time to be out on my deck. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, please step up to the podium and give us your name. Maybe people are tired of me saying that, but I need your name and your address for the record, sir. Thank you very much.
I'm Riley Root. My wife and I own Solid Systems of the building, it's at 13795.
And Mr. Root, we do also have your letter in our background.
Right.
I saw it.
So, we just moved in. We moved in in November. Noticed when we were working on the building, I was there, down there every weekend through November, December, and we noticed that coming and going's over there, and thought, oh, must be, you know, some sort of a media hall of some sort. I was approached by Rick and responded via email. We're at pretty much a 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM during the week operation. And, you know, I had made the offer to Valen Natural Foods that if they need some parking spaces on the weekend, they're part of our PUD, and I said, "Yep, no problem, that would be..." "No, she would love to let them use it." They asked if they needed some overflow parking. I said, "As long as you're good neighbors, as long as you don't leave a mess, I don't mind. It's not a problem." So that's what the email was about. I have to say I have a bit of deja vu moment because when we were in Apple Valley, we were, our office lane was across the street from River Valley Church. And on Wednesday nights, on Saturdays and Sundays, sometimes Friday nights, there would be a lot of cars coming, sometimes they would use our parking lot. I didn't mind, we didn't use it during the weekend or in the evening, so we really didn't care. I felt like I needed to come up and say, you know, "I'm going to be a good neighbor, I would expect these folks to be..." It sounds like they've been taken advantage of by the landlord, and shame on the landlord. I have to say I was surprised, Jim, when you attacked me and threatened me outside here.
Can we, we need to be able to just, if we could focus on...
I see you appreciate, they threatened me, and we can all just go on. You know, we can be all good neighbors. And I can assure you that we are a good neighbor, and I'm just trying to be a good neighbor as well.
So I would appreciate if we could continue to... Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this? Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Tom Malander. I live at 456 Reflection Road in Apple Valley. We moved in in 1989. Lake issues, pond management, I quote on those. Burnsville and Apple Valley Beach invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in Lake Almagnet. And the citizens, I was Lakeville Association President for eight, nine years. There's another former president here. Whatever weight that carries, there's been substantial investment brought from the citizens, residents, and the cities to protect water quality on Lake Almagnet. Second issue, I'm familiar with the Planning Association process. I sit on the Planning Commission for a neighboring community. I know that you guys are under no obligation to make allowances either for the convenience of prospective tenants or prospective or current owners to change the PUD. This is an intense use with likelihood and intentions to be more intense use. It's, as Jim Keble alluded to, there's no necessity for it. We always dislike it when we get after-the-fact applications, when somebody has been disregarding rules and then comes in and says, "Well, I'll go to be okay." I don't think that's the way to go about it either. They ought to, whether they do know or not, go in that this was not a correct use. It doesn't really round your points for us, and I don't think it should with you guys either.
Please step up to the podium.
My name is Fred Gross. I live on 13804 Frontier Lane, sort of across the street. My wife and I built in 1979 and saw McAndrews from, it wasn't even McAndrews, that two-lane road, one each way, and we saw 35B come through. Development happens. And as you get older, you probably get a little more judicious in your review of things beforehand and things like that. So when McDonald's wanted to come in here, the only thing, and I'm going to try to not duplicate here, when McDonald's and Holiday went away, they would prove their application, but that was only until the city council turned it down, just so everybody knows. And then, secondly, worth investment comes risk, and I'm not sure who owns these buildings, have no idea, or if they own all of them. But if you have a building and you have a tenant, and the tenant leaves, and you have a hard time getting a new tenant or keeping tenants, period, that's the risk that comes with investment. And to change rules and to go in, I mean, I don't blame them for trying at all, but it's not the correct way to do it, and I don't see it as the council or the Planning Commission's duty to accommodate someone's problem. I think that's their problem, not our problem, not your problem. So, secondarily, on the tenants, there are two other buildings there. I'm not speaking for anybody, I don't know, I don't know who's in there, but I do know that if I was a tenant and I saw more and more and more traffic being developed by some other area within the PUD, and it infringed upon my ability to grow my business or just conduct my business and have my customers come in easily and leave easily without traffic problems, I would consider leaving. We all know that's a possibility. Then you have another owner of a building, or you have the owner of a second building that's trying to fill that, and sympathy has come into effect there where, you know, Planning Commission or a council or a city, well, they want to help, and if you've got, you've got a community center that's already there, they want to grow. The intent of any entity almost in existence is to grow. So the sympathies would be to allow them to, you know, help them out and help them go into another building, more traffic. I was on the Steering Committee with a number of neighbors here. We spent a lot of time, I won't go into all that, but I spent a lot of time with Judy Schumpert, and the result is what is there. We like the result, and they, to Judy's credit and the city and Mayor Kozas, they involve the neighbors. They put us on committee, and we sat, invested a lot of time, and came up with a good result, we feel, the city felt. We don't think it should be changed, period. The intent is to grow, any entity wants to grow, and I'm guessing that the manufacturer wants to grow. I know today they're small, and they said they would be small, they don't really want to grow. But if orders come in, you're not going to cut them out, they're going to grow. Then they may need those 14 more spots that they are loaning, and thus you have an added problem. I'll finish this way. One Saturday a year, the maintenance facility takes in recycling.
I've been there.
I want you to envision that. 52 weekends, two days a weekend, 104, and then you can do whatever you want to do on Saturdays.
That's a lot of traffic.
So just envision that. I don't, I've never gone over there. I one time got in line, I thought, forget it. Now you go to Best Buy and drop off. Last thing, again, envision this, the 18-wheeler, the poor guy or gal trying to wheel through all these cars on Frontier Court. Envision this, envision a little kid, rambunctious as they are, running out in the 18-wheeler or whatever it is, is trying to get out through all those cars on Frontier Court. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? You've heard my speech. Please give us your name and your address for the record.
John Reer, I live at 1709 Victoria Lane. I only, there's a couple of things I don't understand is, first of all, I don't think the property owner would have to apply for this and be here. And the other thing is, I've done lake monitoring on Lake Almagnet since the day it started being a monitor, it's probably been there most 40 years, and I know one thing, if I wanted to change the surface on my house and add on to my garage, I would get shut down. And I don't think that this place would do anything to get ahead of me and be allowed to do that, so they could meet the fire requirements over there. And I would advise everybody else has covered everything.
So, thank you, sir.
And thank you to the city for what you did already, because it worked out very well.
It is the responsibility of the applicant to come in front of the city, not the property owner.
The property owner needs to sign the application.
Anybody else? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing.
Can I make one last comment?
Okay, ma'am. Yes, I will reopen the public hearing.
Am I a different person if I gave myself... I just want to be...
Ma'am, I need, can you please give me your name and address for the record?
I'm kind of cheating because this is my second time, so it's Andrew Morsete Krzynski, 13817 Frontier Lane, Burnsville. And I just wanted to add, because it came up, because John brought it up, this question of should the developer be responsible? And I understand you're saying, no, they're not technically responsible, if I'm hearing you correctly. On the other hand, I want to reiterate and kind of put an exclamation point on, it sounds like we have a developer issue, and if this developer is going to continue to do this sort of stuff, I think we're fools to let it go on. So, yes, it's the applicant's job to be here, but developers will tend to also want to be involved in these, and the fact that they're not here to tell us something.
We do have your comments on record.
Sorry.
Thank you. Anyone else? One more individual. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address for the record.
Glenn Flowers, 1508 McAndrews Road East, and I currently own two residences that will be impacted by this amendment. One key, I pretty much agree with all the points that have been made so far. One key aspect pertaining to public safety on McAndrews Road is the increasingly rampant speeding that occurs on McAndrews Road in both directions. That is, it's becoming increasingly dangerous, and as mentioned, the increased potential for accidents, but speeding is a key fact, and tailgating are key factors in potentially lessening public safety in entering and exiting McAndrews Road. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. And the applicant would like to speak?
Thank you again, just, I would be very brief. For the Friday, our plan is now from 1:00 to 1:00 o'clock. It's a Friday player that is the issue. Usually it's 1:00 to 2:00 on, so the evening, afternoon is like for the kids to come, preparing for the Saturday and Sunday. Also, we're thinking about also... Also, we're thinking about also, if we reduce the size of the prayer hall, is that legitimate request? So, that's another thing that we are, I'm trying to measure. So, if we reduce the prayer hall, is that something that we, that will, is reasonable? That's it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair before Mr. Abdi, if I can ask you a follow-up question.
Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Abdi, as I said, thank you for coming and for answering my question I asked at first. I am concerned about prayers in, that now you're having Friday prayers only, right? Am I right?
No, we don't have Friday prayers right now.
Okay. Well, that's what you're planning, that's what you're planning to have. Will the number of people coming in for prayers increase during Ramadan, Eid al-Fitr, Eid al-Aza? You know, those are your holy days, and I would assume if there's a place of worship or place for prayer, people from your religion, from the neighboring community may want to come. Will that be, or would they be allowed to come?
There, as is normal here for the community, the celebrations, they tend to go to halls that hold a lot of people.
Okay.
So, they are not usually done there. Ramadan, you may have, our main target for us are the community members that we serve only. And, you know, what our goal or our vision is, instead of thinking about increasing in number, why would, because we're not, we're nonprofit. We have our jobs that we go to five days, we're not thinking about profit making. So, it's a matter of quality, you know, 100 families or 80 families, 50 families, that we serve them good, and we maintain those, and some move them, bring some in, more than thinking about just growing in size and all of that. And if there is that need in the future, maybe, then we should want to stay here. But our list that we set right now, you know, was five years, and we were going through it like three, four months to sort out the details.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will close the public hearing at this time, and commissioners, we will take comments. Commissioner Thomas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've sat here and listened. Well, I have a question for Brian. I think it's pretty obvious, but I just want to make sure it's not clear on the, on the existing conditions map. Dig pond does drain to Alimagnet?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. I sat here and listened to everyone speak. I looked at the background information real closely. Thank you to the staff for preparing that. I visited the site, and traffic was addressed by our, our traffic engineer, and I do agree with a lot of people that despite the fact that the capacity issues, capacity won't be an issue. I've lived in Burnsville a long time. If I go into Frontier Court, I will not come out and take a left on McAndrews Road, period. So, so that's one thing. I mean, we talked about traffic, but that's my main concern on traffic. We've talked about an applicant that I think has been clearly misled by a building owner, property owner. I think that's unfortunate. I think, and hope that we find an appropriate spot for you in Burnsville. But I look at the 1997 PUD and the amendment before us, and from my point of view, strictly on the parking, the 1997 PUD is 50% underparked. With the new proposal, it's 100% minimum. And, and that's my, my issue. I think because of the parking issue, I would have to recommend denial of the PUD amendment request.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas. Other commissioners, Commissioner Levy, you have the floor.
In addition to the parking, the comment about making a left turn out of Frontier Court, getting in and out of that street is very difficult. Making a left turn into it from McAndrews, going, I guess would be east on McAndrews, the traffic and the parking lead me to consider denying the request.
Thank you. Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Benke.
I concur with both the other two commissioners on traffic. My, my issue comes in from the assembly use right from the start. Unfortunately, a school or prayer hall are the same as far as the fire marshal is concerned. They're an assembly use, and even though you might not be using the building to the level that the fire marshal can rate it at, he would still be required to put a sign on the door that allows up to that many people, and that's how the code works. And should you move on to another building because that any PUD chain would run with the building, another renter could come in and basically fill that building. And by, by changing the PUD, we've basically opened the door to that, and I can't see another reason, from everything that we've been talked about, that, that would support changing the PUD at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, commissioners, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Garrison's staff for doing a very in-depth background report on, on this building and the entire neighborhood there. As usual, always do a good job. I also like to commend the applicant for their commitment to three things. One, for your community, their particular community that they represent, trying to find a place so they can meet as a community center and have constructive and positive discussions. I commend you for that. It's something which you all take into account. Also, prayers. Now, what, personally, I value that tremendously, and I commend you for doing that. And the final one is your students. You're trying to find a place so that your students can be tutored, you can find a place where they can learn, and so you can reach their full potential. All of us, I think, want that. I, so as I said earlier, I strongly believe that the applicants were not well represented by the property owner. They put them in a jam, that they got to get themselves out now. Taking those things, those points into consideration, Mr. Chair, I have to support staff, agree with staff in their recommendation to recommend to the city council that we deny this application. And I do that after last soul searching and after looking at the statues and the ordinances that we have to work with. We all know, we have all said, you heard so much about parking, and so I don't need to talk more about that. Parking is a problem, and it's a very serious problem. Two, that neighborhood, that particular development is not suitable for school. If you're going to have a school, even if the students come there just half a day, the next group coming for the other half a day, these are students. When it's nice outside, you want to go outside. And when they go outside, when you have the traffic, you don't know what can happen. Now, we don't want to lose one of our people. We don't want to. And if I vote in favor of this, I will be contributing to the safety problem, and so I decide not to vote in favor of it. We all know that, you know, I was there, I was there Saturday, I was there today, and I parked, and I looked at the traffic, and Saturday was terribly worse, traffic going in and out. And so I said, "Want to go back a day?" And that was Saturday, it's busy, people go shopping and do their business. I go today. It was also not as busy, but it was busy today. And when I look around, I went and parked at the back of the building, and I looked at area for students even to play a little bit, there's none. And when students are in a building, they want to get outside for even five minutes, especially when it's warm and it's nice out there, they want to get out there. And I don't think, if I am a teacher there, I would want my kids to go out there because I'd be scared for their safety. Taking all of those things into consideration, Mr. Chair, I have to regrettably say that I'm not going to vote in favor of this, though I feel for the applicants, their intentions are good. This is not the right place for what they want. I would hope that if the city council deny their application, that staff can work with them to find an appropriate place to provide the services that they want to provide. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. I appreciate everyone's comments this evening. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone in attendance this evening. I can't tell you how many times we sit here alone, and there is no one here to, here to talk to us, so you have kind of validated what we do. I also, unfortunately, cannot support this application for several reasons. One, I, I always go back to the role that we have as a planning commission, and if you, if you read in our background, the role of the planning commission is to review the technical aspects of the requested PUD amendment as it relates to the zoning ordinance and the cop plan. In the reference that I appreciate, I think great work was done early on with the neighborhood from the standpoint of what this property is used for. It's a, it's a very encumbered process, it was a very difficult development, there's a tremendous amount of issues associated with shoreline, there's issues with buried cable, there's a lot of things that have dictated where the parking is and where the building is, and I believe the work that was done at the time was, was excellent work, and it's a, it's a, it's a mix for that area. I am very concerned about other people that have office space in the building. The, the use, I do, the mention was about the prayer hall, but specifically, if you focus on what we talk about, it's not about a specific use in a specific room in that building, it's about the occupancy permit that the fire marshal allows for the entire building. If there was less of a prayer hall, there could be more classroom space, and it's about the use of the space. I also spent time there Sunday morning at 9:00 o'clock, and it's a very, very difficult situation. I was fairly, I was scared. There was instances where the sheer number of cars that were coming and going and how they were getting into that lot, and quite honestly, the lot is just not designed for that. The PUD was designed for low use, for an office space with minimal traffic, and we've got other tenants in the area that would be affected. I did bring up the point in reference to, even with the applicant's information on their utilization was different than the fire marshal's, even theirs did not come close. And I do not remember a time where we, as a commission, have granted that large of a variance on parking. So, I, I also cannot support this, and I guess I said that, but I also, in, with Commissioner Singh, I do apologize for the applicant from the standpoint of how you may have been misled, but from the technical aspects of what we are asked to do, we, I cannot support this. So, commissioners, at this point, I would stand for a motion. Commissioner Levy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council denial of the PUD amendment application to change a building use to community center with a school and prayer hall, and that all uses of the building other than office cease operation and vacate the premises by June 5th, 2016.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Benke. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you for coming this evening. That, this application, I'm sorry, this application will go to the city council on April 5th. We do have one additional item on our agenda this evening, so should we take a break? Next time I come, I want to use one brush. Two brushes. I think I have one brush. All right. Excuse me, folks, I do, excuse me, folks, I do appreciate everyone's time this evening, but we do have another application in front of us this evening that we need to give them Excuse me, yes, can we, we do have a second application we need to cover this evening. Could I ask some people to please step out into the hallway? What's that, Ron? Okay. I don't know if I can, hold on just a second.
I guess we're going to have to.
The, uh- The fourth item on our agenda this evening is also a public hearing, is an application for Blueport Properties Investment LLC for a PUD amendment for a building addition and outdoor patio dining to India Palace located at 1905 County Road 42 West. And Regina, you have the floor.
Great. Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. As stated, there is a planning unit development amendment request for India Palace located off of County Road 42 and 5, right on the corner. Surrounding uses are B3 PUD as well as industrial are I3 to the south. This is an aerial view. It's an older aerial view. This particular shot just shows the India Palace. As you may recall, there was a original planning unit development, which was Foster Market, Honey Baked Ham, and then India Palace purchased the property. Subsequently, they added on to the building just to the east, and it's currently Nutmeg Brew House. Unfortunately, the aerial photo is not quite up to date, so it doesn't quite show that. I think there's a couple of shots where construction is occurring, but it didn't really give a clear view of the area. So, the proposal today is for an addition, 1,195 square feet would be added to the north of the India Palace, as well as a 320-square-foot outdoor dining area to the north. You have seen this before through previous planning at developments. The last PUD was in October of 2015, where the city council referred that any changes to the exterior of the India Palace be reviewed by the planning commission again as a planning unit development amendment, so that's why you're seeing it tonight. The parking has not changed from the previous approvals with the Nutmeg Brew House or previous amendments to the India Palace PUD. No additional parking is proposed. Basically, what's there on site will serve the, both of the restaurants and is adequate according to city code standards. This provides a floor plan layout of both the Nutmeg Brew House as well as the proposed additional seating for the India Palace restaurant. The addition is located right here. Total seating count for the indoor- Total seating count for the indoor area of India Palace would be up to 90 seats, and then the exterior outdoor patio area would provide up to 16 optional outdoor dining spaces. They do provide a example of what the proposed outdoor dining tables could look like, and that's provided as an example of permanent looking in nature, semi-permanent looking in nature. As part of the proposal, as part of the addition, they're proposing building perimeter landscaping, which meets city code, as well as some grassed area near the proposed patio addition as well. Remaining of the site will remain consistent with the landscaping on site, as you see This color rendering provides an example of when or if the addition occurs, of what this will look like, and you've seen different renditions in the past, and I can go through each one. So when India Palace came, or when it was the Boston Market and Honey Baked Ham and India Palace, it was a very pink-toned effus, and the brick is basically the same brick that is out there today. When the Nutmeg Brew House came in, it was a very, more of a yellow creamy-toned color and effus that was proposed on the addition. The original request, I believe that was reviewed prior, was to match the India Palace. Now that's kind of flip-flop. Now India Palace is requesting to blend in or complement the Nutmeg Brew House in a lot of that color and tone. So the addition basically, again, bumps out closer to the north. They do provide some building breaks at the entry of the building, as well as a small break at the, where the Nutmeg Brew House and the India Palace will join. They're continuing the theme of the gray-silver tone gooseneck lighting on the front of the building, as well as the same brick and stone or masonry unit base that you see on the India Palace existing, that will be proposed on the new addition. They are removing the red pyramid tower that is on the existing India Palace and providing a more clean line consistent with the Nutmeg Brew House for the roof parapet area. The awning area currently in their elevations is shown as a striped awning. One of the staff recommendations is that it is either matching the entry feature at the Nutmeg Brew House, or that the awning color matches in tone that sort of brown color that you see throughout the striped elements of the India Palace. Currently on the existing India Palace, on the very west elevation, the India Palace shows the jersey cream color, that sort of yellow creamy tone matching Nutmeg. However, they're proposing in their, in their notes that the India Palace would remain a, that pinkish tone that we see today on the existing part of the addition, as well as the south side. Staff is requesting that a condition is added to carry on that jersey cream color, as well as to carry on the sort of brown stripe instead of the red stripe that continues, so that it's complementary throughout all sides of the building, not just the addition portion. The silver tone gooseneck lighting is proposed on the west side, again, complementing the addition, as well as the existing Nutmeg Brew House. I do want to note that the signage was not provided in the calculations. However, based off of measurements, staff believes that this will meet city code requirements. Any details would have to meet city code, sign code requirements, as well as far as depth of letters and square footage. Rooftop mechanical equipment, if you drive by today, you'll probably notice some mechanical equipment that's visible as a condition and a city code requirement. City code wants, or city staff wants to ensure that any mechanical equipment is screened. That is also a condition listed. The, let's see here. One last note, there is a condition in the staff report regarding the trash enclosure. The current bins are located within required parking, and there is an outstanding code enforcement issue regarding the refuge and storage of empty containers on site, so that will have to be cleaned up prior to any building permit issuance if this is approved. And the bins would be required to go back in the enclosure to free up some of that parking. Staff does recommend approval. The recommendations are listed here, again, that the awnings match the Nutmeg Brew House, or that the fabric awnings are changed so that they're brown tone or earth tone in color instead of the striped awning. That the red stripe that you see above and below the existing signage along the roof line and below the sign, that on the, not only on the new addition, but on the existing building, that that is, that that matches the entire building, whether it's painted or a skin is provided, so that the colors are complementary. Again, the effus on any of the new, I'm sorry, on the existing south and west elevations, that's also painted to match that jersey cream color or, so that it's complementary as well. That any rooftop mechanical equipment screened, meeting code requirements. Again, that the dumpsters be relocated prior to building permits issuance, and that the signed permit is applied for, just as any new signed permit would be applied for, meeting code requirements. The applicant is here. Certainly, if you have any questions regarding elements of the presentation, I'd be more than happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll leave it up to you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. I appreciate your background. Commissioners, questions for staff? Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. Yep, I know. It's sort of my purview, though, isn't it?
It is, it is.
It is, it is.
Very good. Ms. Dean, thank you. No, I'm not against it. I'm just wondering, how are we dealing with the removal of the existing pyramid since it's part of the PUD, again, the planning unit development for that project? I know that years and years ago, when several of the other buildings were built, the developers of those buildings resisted heavily adding the pyramids, and now this one is being removed. Again, I'm not against it, I'm just wondering how we're dealing with that. And is that our issue, or is that the landowner's issue, or what?
As far as the removal of the pyramid, I mean, that's, any one of the businesses could come in and make that request to have it removed. It's, it's an element of the architecture at the time, and it's currently subject to your, you know, if you wanted to keep it and have them paint it, you know, a brown color, that could be a condition.
I was more concerned with the paperwork. However, I think that that does sort of lead into the other parts, and if we were to go back to when Nutmeg came in, some of my same comments from Nutmeg are, haven't been addressed, and they may not be, I mean, I'm one person here, but the, I appreciate the color change now. I mean, quite honestly, you know, I have to admit, I was pretty appalled when I first saw the colors that went on compared to what we were shown and the way it turned out. I think that what I am seeing here from an architectural standpoint is about a 75% solution, only because the coloring has gone across the front, around the sides, and we're gonna ask them, I presume, to continue around and tie it together. To me, when I first saw the building, I was intrigued by having two adjacent uses that fit together, but really didn't. And when I, when I saw that the India Palace was going to be added on to, I saw that as an opportunity for them to reinvent the front of the building. And I'm not seeing that here. I'm only seeing the same front that was there brought forward 12 feet. And I see an issue from an architectural standpoint where there's a knuckle between the two uses, to me, again, from a design standpoint, where, to me, it's missed. Something, some element of the building where they come together, to me, should signify a connector between the two. I see it on the ground with the patio. I'm not trying to add to the, to the applicant's cost or anything here, but a trellis, a change in heights that addressed the buildings differently. I'm just not seeing that, and to me, it's becoming an opportunity lost to go now. They've addressed a lot of the other issues totally here. The color's great, the lights coming across, you know, the buildings are together, but they're not, and I'm just, I'm not feeling it to be totally done. And I needed to talk about that. It's really not really a question to you, but I'm just wondering, have they talked anymore? Well, I guess I can ask them too. Have there been any other talk about the patio in terms of what their future plans for it might be, or is this all that was presented to this point?
This is all that's been presented.
Again, I have a, that question's for the owner. Oh, I see here that we're bringing India Palace up to the screening requirement for the mechanical equipment. Are we, I mean, I know that originally Nutmeg was an addition, and both facilities were able to simply paint the equipment. Are both facilities now going to have screened equipment, or is it just India Palace?
It's all part of the same property, and all subject to the same city code requirement, and if it's not screened adequately, that's something that would need to be addressed.
Can we talk about that? So on the picture you have in front of us...
I saw it there, and that's why I was asking.
And I want, so, because the screening around the equipment on top of the brew house is not there today, so is this a proposed screening on any of these? The middle picture on the left, it looks like there's an attempt there to screen the existing rooftop units on, on the brew house. Is that what?
I believe that's their attempt to screen from, if you're heading west on County Road 42, to screen both.
Right, and I think what comes up here, and again, I don't remember seeing the screening, well, I guess it probably wasn't addressed. The building sits down from County Road 42, so it's a difficult situation for them to screen. And would our, would our ordinance require it from the road, or would it be a specific angle from an assumed level surface?
I believe it's from the road. Correct me if I'm wrong, Deb.
Yes, the way that the ordinance addresses it, and we've had a dissimilar situation, I know, for Jared Diamond, yeah, that to restore. The ordinance says that you take the screening requirement measured from the opposite side of the, the street, and then they, you know, provide an elevation, so there is a defined point to, to determine that. But like, with the instance with the Jared building, you did have County Road 42 and it was down here, and it's just not possible to be able to screen that 100%. So with the design, they tried to as best as possible.
As best as possible, right, okay. But, and essentially that right now is part of this, where it sounds like the current staff request is to try to screen it as best as we can.
Correct.
And try and meet the standard.
Correct.
Okay.
We can come in. No, it was them. Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Workman, you have the floor.
This might be not an irrelevant question, but is the, maybe it's for the applicant, but is the restaurant going to be open during the remodel, or will the restaurant be closed?
We can, when we have the applicant come up.
I will.
At that point, why don't we have the applicant come up and, and give us your name, and you've heard that before, haven't you now? Give your name and address.
Eagle River, 11 Saratoga Lane, Plymouth.
Okay.
And I'm going to be a contractor, and probably will be speaking on behalf of the owner.
Okay.
Because I probably know more than he does, in the architectural and the structural. So, thank you very much for your consideration and...
Commissioner Workman, your question.
Is the restaurant going to be open while the remodel is occurring?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Yeah. What we're gonna do, we are planning to, as you probably know, there is another door on the west side of the building. We're gonna use that as a main entrance, but main entrance will be blocked from outside with the film, so nobody's gonna see what's going on behind the glass, so it will be open, but there will be sign, use the other door.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Benke?
Mr. Chair. Just a curious question here, that the current awning is striped. The striped awning is proposed, again, it was also, I guess it would have still been shown in the Nutmeg application. Is there a significance, a cultural significance to the stripe, or is it just...
Not at all.
Okay, okay. I guess I have a hard time giving them a color if something complementary will work beyond the...
But what we're planning to do, we're gonna keep the same awning, but we're gonna remove it and reinstall it. As soon as we painted the main and the rest of the existing restaurant, we'll try to match it up to what would fit better as a color standpoint. So if it needs to be brown, we'll paint, we order the brown fabric, it's a special fabric, it's not the regular fabric, it's kind of vinyl, so...
So you plan on reskining the existing awning structure?
Yes, yes.
That's it. Commissioners, other questions? The only, the only thing I, and it's a condition, the trash in the back of the building's a mess. I spent, I spent some time there Sunday, and it's really sad. I don't know if we're gonna have enough trash enclosure to take care of both businesses, but I, I have some pictures. It's not pretty. From a restaurant standpoint, it's not a good deal.
I can show you there are other pieces. Before we came today, I took a picture of what it looked like before now, so I basically asked them to remove all the garbage around the building, so it looks better. And what we're planning to do, as soon as we get going on this addition, we probably will apply for a different permit. We'll try to build bigger trash enclosure, but we don't want to come in with trash permit with the permit with this building, because it's been ongoing process.
Yeah, okay.
We would like to get going on at least one, and then apply for another one. We definitely will do something. It depends what kind of recommendations, what kind of regulations we have to face.
I'm sure staff can work with you on that.
Sure, absolutely.
Any questions? Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I will ask anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, please step up to the podium and give us your name and number and address for the record. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. It's kind of one end of the continuum to the other. So Commissioners, your pleasure.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think the coming of India Palace to Burnsville has been a great addition to our list of restaurants, and it's a very good restaurant. I must admit, I do visit there quite a bit, and one of the first things when I park, I look at the back, you know, I have to put on the planning commission hat, and I look to see, look for garbage and, and those kinds of things, and yes, I did see some of that, but they promised to take care of it. I think this is a good outfit that is cooperating with staff, and I would support your application.
Thank you. Commissioners, other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Benke.
Just want to say, I appreciate the work that they've gone through, from one end to the other, on, on working on this building. You know, I do think I would have loved to have seen a little bit more, and I do need to say that again. I... I, I, I'm gonna offer, when we get to it, I would basically offer a regretful, a regretful support.
Okay. Commissioners, Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was waiting for you to ask if the applicant had any comments on the conditions. I failed to ask all these up here.
Oh, I did, I always ask that.
Yes, you do.
Sorry. With the five, six, six conditions, did you have any concerns or questions based around the conditions?
No.
Okay. Thought you might have said something in, when you're up here. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Thank you. Chair, you ready for a motion? I am and I would, I would also reiterate, I live in the area, seems to be very popular, it's a great addition to our community, I thank you for, for bringing it to us.
And what you were able to get to happen with Nutmeg was, was awesome.
Yep.
I mean, it's a, and I'm sure it's bringing additional traffic to you as well.
Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, it's my honor to recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the PUD amendment for a billing addition and outdoor patio dining, dining located at 1905 County Road 42 with the following six conditions as presented.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Yeah, it was there.
Okay.
It was an aye.
Oh, it was an aye, okay.
That was an aye.
And the motion carries. This will be in front of the city council on April 5th. Thank you very much for coming in. Our fifth and final item this evening is updates and Commissioners, do you have any updates? None? Commissioner Benke has something?
I lost it.
It'll come back.
Yeah, after the meeting unfortunately.
Staff?
The only thing we have is the agenda for the next meeting, which I'll pass out, which includes, unless something changes, an application for the same site, but it's for the northernmost building for a daycare.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. At that point, I would stand for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Benke, second by Commissioner Thomas. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay and the motion carries. I'd like to thank everyone for their attendance this evening and I hope everyone has a safe drive home. Thank you very much and have a good evening.